Okay, we're calling the meeting of the Planning Commission to order for April 23rd, 2015. And let me just say, if you weren't notified, the item number 124 Iron Springs Road was taken off the calendar for today's hearing. So if anybody's here for that property, it won't be on the calendar today. So we appear to have a quorum. Let's have a roll call, please.
And I'm sitting in for clerk who will be doing the minutes from the recording. So Commissioner Caroline.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Ezra. Sorry, I'm sorry. Esther, give me your...
Gonzalez Parver.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gonzalez Parver. Forgive me, I drew a blank. And let the record show that that is our entire Planning Commission at this point in time. We have three empty seats.
And I just might add with that note that if anybody's interested in applying for the Planning Commission, I believe we have three slots. There may be some candidates being interviewed pretty soon, but you might want to consider that possibility. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda.
And Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
As you mentioned, item number one on the consent calendar, 24 Iron Springs Road has been moved to the 21st meeting for lack of a quorum because as you've mentioned, well, actually, as the audience doesn't know yet, you have to step down and recuse yourself because of your proximity to the property. Also, the proclamation for Commissioner Ezra has been put off also till the 21st. And that's all the changes to the agenda I have.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda or comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as altered?
I'll make a motion to... I'm sorry. Trying to pull... To approve the agenda as modified.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we will move on to new business. Let me just make a little bit of a comment is that if anybody testifies for one of the properties tonight, it's please keep it to three minutes. We don't actually have someone operating the clock, so I'll kind of give you a heads So we have consent items on the agenda, so we're moving to number two.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. You might just ask if anyone has any comments on any items not on the agenda or anything not on the agenda, public comments.
Yes, okay. Are there any public comments of items that are not on the agenda? This is a chance for public to say something about the town. Okay. Now we'll move on to the two remaining consent items. So we'll start with number two, 69 Spruce Road, application number 15-09. Anybody in the audience, yes, please, if you have comments, please come up to the podium and you'll be...
Hold on. You might want to just inform the audience. Usually with consent items, we just approve them as a batch unless there are reasons why they should be pulled from the agenda. Either the commissioners are, you know, want to have a more robust discussion about it, or there's some sort of objection to the proposal that we... that might require us from pulling it, so... Just along those lines, too, just letting people know. We won't necessarily get into the discussion of it. We need to decide first whether or not to pull it from the agenda. If we pull it from the agenda, then we go through the full report from staff, hearing from the audience, discussion up here. So if there's a reason... So at this point, it's just stating why you might want it pulled from the agenda and not making the full conversation.
Makes perfect sense.
I am Tanya Stosky from 71 Spruce Road, and I just have some concerns that I'd like to raise about the project at 69. So I don't know if it constitutes pulling it from the agenda. We just have some concerns about the project and its proximity to our property.
Could you go ahead and express what those concerns are?
Okay. So we're the next door neighbor, and the project comes up right alongside the edge of our property, which is also alongside the very edge of our home and the stairs that access our home. So we just have some concerns about the engineering adjacent to our property. I haven't seen the actual drawings of the project, and I would like to actually get copies of that to see if I could have an engineer look at those as well. I am an architect and I work with engineers, so it would be something that I would like to have done just because of our concerns. The proximity is such that right along the property line is where the foundation of our home actually sits, as well as our stairs, so that's why it's such a concern to us. The depth of the excavation at the front of the property is something that's a little bit of a concern for future settlement of the hillside because we are on a very steep hillside. And we're also concerned about some of the larger trees in the neighborhood. There is one tree on the property that I believe in the plans, from my understanding, that it's not being called out as being affected, but we just want to make sure that it's been considered and will be properly protected. It's a very large pine tree that is a little ways back from the front of the property, and it may be okay, but we just want to make sure that it's being considered and taken care of.
Mr. Chair, I might recommend that you find out if anyone else in the audience would like to comment on the other consent item, and then I have a comment to follow up on her statement.
Okay. With recommendation of staff, I'll ask any members of the public here regarding 127 Dominga Avenue. Apparently not.
Okay, so...
No, no. I would actually just... I don't know if we need to pull it to correct or to modify a word in the resolution. It's one word, so...
I don't believe you need to pull it. So why don't you go ahead and tell me what that one...
Okay. On resolution 1507, item one, it says a proposed remodel as modified with the removal of the picture windows, installation of limited electrical improvements, and use limited by recorded deed restriction discourage utilization. I would like to change to prohibits utilization of the 299 square foot as living space.
Okay. I think we can make that change, and you can go ahead and approve when you get to that.
Any discussion on that idea? I think it's a good idea.
So it's a technical clarification. It's not worthy of pulling the thing. We can make that change. Going back to the comment on 69 Spruce, as you can tell tonight, I'm sitting in for our principal planner, Linda Neal, who's the project planner on this, and I checked with her before tonight's meeting on both these last two items on the consent, and we're well within our timeframes to continue number two, 69 Spruce Road, to the May 21st meeting, which I would highly recommend to allow the neighbor a chance to see the plans, check in with Linda, discuss things, and then bring it back.
I agree, since there was a foundation question, which is fairly foundational, I would recommend that, that we... I need to wonder if we need to have a motion to continue, however. And to the person who testified, there is a copy of the plans on the safe as you enter. If you want to see it right now, we just have to leave it there because that's a public copy. And I believe you can pick up a copy from staff.
Yes, come on by the office.
I would like to add a comment regarding 127 Dominga.
So, and the comment is...
Well, I just... I want to, I guess, just clarify an issue. At the last meeting, I guess I asked, and it's in the minutes, if the space had sheetrock, and Linda confirmed that it did not have sheetrock. So I want to... Is the... Will it remained without sheetrock?
Well, I can't speak to that without Linda here to answer that, so if you want to continue that item also, I would recommend continuing it.
But could we pull it in order to...
You can. You can pull it if you like, yes.
Because I see the...
I just can't speak to that.
The applicant's here, so he might...
Back to 69 Spruce Avenue. I'm the engineer that prepared the... Structure engineer that prepared the plans for... That are available right now for review and front. And I'll be more than willing to work with our neighbors here to clarify what we have designed for and what the forces are, everything related to engineering. What would be the procedure from your point of view?
So, Mr. Chair, at this point, I think we're starting to get in the woods on both. I think that what you want to do at this point is pull them both from consent and go through them one at a time so that we can determine whether we can settle things here or whether we want to continue them. I wouldn't automatically continue at this point.
Okay. Let us... Let's say this. Any further comments on 69 Dominga from the planning commissioners? Well, I suggest then that we pull 69 Spruce Road, sorry, from the consent calendar and 127 Dominga as well, and we can put those on the... On a public hearing item calendar, basically.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we pull both of the consent items, put them on a... And hear them as regular projects for at least discussion, and it sounds like possible continuance. So that's a motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, we're actually just about to move into the public hearing items, which these two are now on that calendar, so we will be getting to the public hearing on them in just a moment.
So, Mr. Chair, since both these are now on the regular agenda, again, I think the best thing to do with 69 Spruce is to continue it.
As I said before, I agree with that because we need to allow the neighbor to examine the plans and see if indeed there'll be a problem with the foundation issue. So do we need a motion to... Motion to... Entertain a motion to continue 69 Spruce Road, and that would be for one month.
Do we need to still formally go through...
Date certain May 21st.
Do we need to still formally go through the regular...
I'm sorry?
Do we still need to, now that we've pulled them, go through the... That was... Your staff report was suggesting that we continue it, and then...
That's correct.
And then, I mean, we have a regular... Do we still need to go through the... Is there any comments or the... No.
Not right now.
Just continue the item.
Because I just... If there's a motion for continuance.
It's just not going to be reasonable right now without Linda's mind here, and I don't have my mind fully wrapped around either of these items.
Then I would second your motion to continue 69 Spruce until May...
I can't make a motion.
No, until... I was asking for the date, until May 21st.
That's May 21st for your calendars. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So the item 69 Spruce Road is continued as a public hearing item on the May 21st hearing calendar.
So what that means is that you all have time to have the conversation with each other about that and come back on May 21st if you need to, so...
Moving on now to 127 Dominga on the public hearing calendar. Are there any public comments?
Actually, if I may, just as an introduction, I think you're all very well versed on what the history is on this, right? And I think that Commissioner Caroline has just asked for a clarification from the applicant on the disposition of sheetrock. Is that right?
Yes.
So perhaps we could hear from the applicant and expedite this.
I just had one other process clarification. So we had approved a use permit, and then they came back. There were some... And then the last time, we did not approve...
This is a new application for modification to use permit.
This is a new application for modification to the use permit that we approved.
You ruled last time on what was allowed and what wasn't allowed, and you said, since you haven't come back with the revisions we wanted, we're now ruling that you don't get to have what you asked in the basement area, okay? But you're welcome to submit an application for a use permit modification, which is what they've done, and they submitted it along the lines of where we were trying to guide them previously.
Which is basically just the windows.
As described in the staff report, yeah. Yes, yes.
There were a few issues: windows, lighting, electrical, and the drywall.
Right. Minimal lighting, minimal...
Yes, if you can address the issue that Commissioner Caroline brought up. Thank you.
David Grabham, Chief Family, Inc., 127 Dominga. After our last meeting, I apologize for not revising the plan. I spoke with Linda, and we came to an agreement that pulling back the electrical to allow for one light, one plug, and a light over the stairs would be... She would be happy with that. We also removed the two large windows. She allowed us to keep the smaller window for an awning to let in air ventilation. It's a small window right beside the laundry room, and we're allowed to do the sheetrock. By allowed, I mean, that's what we agreed on. She said with that compromise, she felt like she could support moving forward with the project. It's kind of where we let it stand from there.
So I have one question of you. If you could... There apparently are three lights in this new plan.
Should just be one over the stairs and one in the main area, that's all, and one plug, so... There's one in the hallway on the bottom of the stairs. That's not considered the part that's in question? Is that what you're talking about?
Okay. So you've resolved your problem of having a light light the stairs. So you have a light above the staircase.
Yes.
And then you have another light sort of in the middle of the room?
Yes.
Okay. And there's one electrical outlet in the room.
Yes.
You've taken out or you're about to take out windows and replace them, two windows, I believe, right?
We took out the two larger windows that are on the front corner flanking the two windows above, and we left the one window that's beside the laundry room, which is basically a two-foot by two-foot window in the corner of the wall.
And in the drawing, the E1 drawing, then, that's what shows... That's where we're looking at the electrical. Where the... Oh, no, we had a question about where the switch was. Is there just one switch at the bottom of the stairs for everything?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the sheetrock.
Okay. And then, as I recall, the drywall rooms for storage, which is a little unusual in some cases, but it was because she has antiques and artwork that she wants to keep. Is there a heater or any kind of air conditioning?
No, not at this... No, there's no heat, no air conditioning. I think that that was part of the compromise with Linda was that she would get to drywall it to keep out spiders and keep it clean, clean storage area.
All right, okay. Any other questions, I think?
Well, yeah, that was my concern because last time I asked Linda if it had sheetrock because to me, that makes it seem like it's unconditioned. Yeah. Because I'd like to see if there's a way that we can re... On the resolution, it's called conditioned space. You know, if it doesn't have a heater and if we don't have insulation, I guess technically it would be unconditioned. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we didn't have the sheetrock. I mean, if... But if that was a, you know... It's a little... It's an item I'm struggling with, but I don't know. Maybe I'm okay with it. I don't know.
Is unfinished plywood an option?
That might be okay with me.
Is there a reason for the sheetrock rather than something like unfinished plywood?
Yeah, I think that when I spoke with Linda, that was kind of our compromise. You know, we really wanted the windows in there, and we wanted the lighting and the sheetrock, and I think that she felt very comfortable. I'm kind of bummed she's not here because my client's been continued for four months on this unfinished room, and we're trying to finish this room for her, but I understand that that happens. We worked together to, you know, I agreed, pulling back the electrical seemed like when we met the first time, that's what you guys wanted, was to cover the windows and pull back the electrical. The sheetrock wasn't even on the board at that point. I think in order to get a clean space that she feels comfortable with, you guys do realize that this is attached to the hallway, and there is no wall between her livable space and this space. You do realize that, right? I mean, this is actually part of the house in storage, so for her not to put sheetrock there doesn't really make sense. But I guess you would have to see it and walk through to understand. I think Linda really understands that, which is why she was willing to let the sheetrock go and was satisfied with pulling the windows out and the electrical.
And just for the record, we only make recommendations. We don't make the decisions.
I agree 100 percent, and I knew that coming in.
Decide.
Yeah.
Okay. Here's where I think we may have some consensus up here about the project. We have come back three times, and just my personal view of it is, I think we could... I would consider approving it with a deed restriction.
It's in there. Item number one.
Yes, she is.
Recorded deed restriction.
That was one of the requirements Linda asked, is that we sign a deed restriction. My client has said from the very beginning there, she was totally willing to do that, so that's been done.
And the deed restriction will prohibit utilization of the space as living space.
That's correct.
And not just discourage.
Right.
As we modified earlier. Okay. So those are my comments.
How does that work for you if it's deed restricted and how does that fit with you, what your feeling is?
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Deed restriction work for you?
Yeah, the deed restriction is fine, and that would apply to future owners, correct?
Yes.
That carries over?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I'm comfortable with that. Would your client be willing to consider the unfinished plywood? If it's a matter of keeping the critters out, I'm just curious if it was...
I mean, what's the difference between painted plywood and painted sheetrock? There's absolutely no difference at all as far as I can... I mean, that's just my own personal opinion, but, you know, I mean, finishing off the space is... My client would like to finish the space and move on with her life. We've been here, like I said, four months, which by no means is your guys' fault, but this is kind of where we worked out. Plywood is just like sheetrock as far as I'm concerned. You put in MDO plywood, and it's the same thing, so... If that's what you want, I'm sure she would be willing to do that. She's not here, so I can't make that really, that call for her, but it seems like kind of the same thing to me.
I mean, I think if someone is going to live in a box without windows, they're more than likely going to live in it with or without with sheetrock versus plywood if they're going to live in the box without windows and not really much lighting, so I don't know that it would further discourage the use of it anymore than we've done. That's my opinion.
Right. And I think the... One issue we have is we need to kind of define what the conditioned limits are maybe or not better. So is there... Can someone make a motion, please?
Chair, I would make a motion to approve resolution 1507.
Second?
I second the motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
And there is an appeal period?
Yes, there is an appeal period of 10 days, and it's a $500 fee also to the town clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so that appears to be the end of our public hearing items. We do have on the agenda discussion... Let's see. One more, please.
I think you're now at the minutes, and I have something to add on that.
We're now to the... Okay. So now we're asking for comments and/or approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 19, 2015.
And let the record show that there's only three of you that were at this meeting, and that doesn't constitute a quorum. So we're going to go ahead and just informally approve these minutes, and we'll make a note when we post them that there was not a quorum. There will never be a quorum to approve these minutes. So the best we can do is with those three of you that were here...
So we accept them?
To accept them, yeah.
So we could take a... Make a motion to accept them because we can't really approve them?
We can even make a motion to approve them. It doesn't matter. We're going to make the record clear.
A motion to approve them as written, perhaps, or something on that.
Well, and you might want to ask if there's any edits from the three that were here.
Are there any changes, however? I had none.
I guess I... Something... The Tree Committee. Okay, so it states that I, you know, been attending the Tree Committee meetings and that I was willing to continue in that capacity, and then the next sentence says that Commissioner Hamilton is on the Tree Committee.
No, no. Thanks for catching that, no.
No, that is an error. That is an error.
Come on. Did you... Who's?
We'll make that correction. We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Okay. So...
A Tree Committee is actually the next... One of the next item.
So one of the three of you could make a motion to pass the minutes with that correction.
So do I hear a motion to pass the minutes with that correction?
Oh, yeah, because you can't make a motion.
Right.
I make a motion to... What was the word we were going to say?
Pick one, accept, I guess.
Accept the minutes with the correction noted for the March 19, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
The correction having been noted that Shelley is not on the Tree Commission.
Great. And...
Rep.
Commissioner Esther Gonzalez Parver recused herself or didn't vote on it, yeah, because she wasn't there. That's right. No, actually, you can't. If you weren't at the meeting, you can't. Yeah, sorry. Let the record show. Which gets us to the next item on your agenda, the election of a Tree Committee member in alternative, and I would put that off until we have a more full Planning Commission. Hopefully, on May 21st, we're going to.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good. So we are going now to discussion items. And number five on the agenda tonight is zoning ordinances, issues, listing prioritization, prioritization and schedule of first meeting to start addressing the zoning code amendments. Did you have any?
Again, I would punt this down the road until our next meeting. We have a more full planning commission. And this is really a placeholder that we just keep on the agenda to, to try to come back to it and remind ourselves that we need to focus on this at some point. So it's really a placeholder.
Okay, well, let me give a little report as liaison to the GPIC. Can I do that here? Or would that be better?
I think it would be under Commissioner's comments and requests.
Could I just make a request for when this number five comes back to us next time? Do we have a written document that has them all listed?
Yes.
Okay, great. I was looking for it in our packet and I didn't see it, so.
Well, it's not in the packet, but I, I know we've had it and I think we've actually shared it in the past. We'll do it again.
I recognize it. So I would just recommend that anytime it's on the agenda that we include whatever the last version of it was. That would be really helpful. Thanks.
Okay.
One more comment on this item. We have a long list of zoning prioritizations that we're trying to schedule. And I think, I would, I would ask similar to what we're doing on the GPIC is each of us pick an ordinance that you are concerned with. And that way we can kind of move four or seven of them up to the top and work on those. Because I have a feeling it's like the mountain, you can't move the mountain, but you can move a few trees. So why don't we, a few boulders. So why don't we do that? Each of us pick an ordinance in that list which should be, can, can you recirculate it or?
Yes, in the next agenda, we will do that.
Okay. And then, and then we'll actually have a discussion about which, which will those seven be. So let's agendize that for next time, a list of seven prioritized ordinances that we will discuss.
You mean to pick, pick your priorities?
Pick seven to prioritize. Okay, thank you. So now we're moving on to the planning director's report.
Okay, so we're hoping that on May 6th is the town council meeting, that we're going to have the vacant seats, the three vacant seats on the planning commission filled. The council has it on their agenda to interview what is now five applicants for the three empty seats. So we're optimistically looking forward to filling the vacant seats because as you all know, working with a minimum number to create a quorum is problematic on scheduling things, let alone someone having to step down from a hearing item. If you recall, on March 19th, you guys recommended to the town council accepting the emergency homeless shelter ordinance. That's going to be heard for the first reading next Wednesday by the town council at a special meeting in this room on Wednesday, 29th. And then presumably it'll be heard for a second reading on the May 6th town council meeting, which would be the adoption. And then it would go into effect 30 days after that. I have an update on the housing element. We've had a conversation with the Department of Housing Community Development today and we're expecting their letter in, within two weeks' time. And I can't get into the details, but it's all moving in a good direction. But we are gonna need, we're on a very tight turnaround to get this document with their comments and our responses to their comments to you. And we have to notice the meeting with you all 10 days ahead of that. So I'm gonna propose two dates and see if you all can fit this in. I'm hoping, like I was tonight, that this, that it will be a very perfunctory meeting. Depending on how many folks from the public show up, it could go into some discussion. But it's virtually the same document that you all pushed up to the council and recommended that they instruct us to deliver to HCD with a couple little minor caveats that will be coming your way. So I'm hoping that the meeting's going to be very succinct. And again, you'll be entertaining a resolution recommending that the town council adopt the housing element. So the first date is May 7th. And that is actually, let me get my calendar up here. That's Thursday, two weeks from tomorrow.
Now, what's gonna happen that day?
That would be to bless the housing element via resolution with the information we bring to you with regards to HCD's comments and our responses to those comments. That's all it will be on.
Okay, I, I will not be here that day.
Okay. The second alternative date was May 11th. That's a Monday, which is rarely, we rarely try to schedule something on the 11th, but I'm going out of the country in the afternoon of the 12th for a week. Does the 11th work?
It does for me.
And, and again, presumably we'll have new members on May 6th. So there's a chance we could still have a quorum even if one of you can't make one of those dates or both.
I can make any of those dates.
I would suggest the 11th because our GPIC, I would, I think it'd be very helpful to have our GPIC member participate in that, given GPIC's role in all this. But unless there's, it's really an inconvenient date to do the 11th. I was suggesting that we do it on the 11th since we're all available on the 11th. And that way, there's not going to be any, you know, if for some reason they didn't pick somebody to come or something like that to join us though.
And that works for me because it gives us a little more wiggle room with getting the final letter from HCD that week of the 4th.
Yes, and I can be here on the 11th.
So the 11th. And would you have a preference on time? Would you like to start at 6 instead of 7?
No, I, I'd rather start at 7 if we could.
Okay, 7 it is. Great. Excellent. Thank you all so much for that.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report for tonight.
What's, what's the update on the parking, the parking, the pilot parking?
Ah, it didn't go anywhere. Didn't go anywhere. There was so much opposition in town in terms of, you know, if you clamp down on parking here, then the parking will move elsewhere. And I think the consensus was at the council level to take a more comprehensive approach during the town center plan development process where we will be getting into different approaches to what I refer to as managed parking. So you can look at all the areas around the downtown as well as the downtown and both public and private resources that might be better utilized.
To avoid the WAC thing.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and by the way, if I can, there's one other thing that comes to mind. At the May 6th town council meeting, there will be a presentation by TAM staff, the Transportation Authority of Marin, which is spearheading the transit corridor study that I'm a member of the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee on. We had actually our third TAC meeting this week, yesterday afternoon, and it's, it's moving along. It's rather exciting. But we'll be getting a sort of a 5,000-foot elevation view of the study and what it's about and what the hopeful outcomes will be from their staff in a very short 10-minute presentation on May 6th. So if, tune in.
I have a question. Is that the same study that you were conducting to determine if the traffic is, most of the traffic or some of the traffic is by visitors?
Ah, no, that's the traffic forum that, we just haven't had the bandwidth yet to get that on calendar and move on it. I apologize. It's still on our list of to-dos, but we're just running a little behind with all the different ordinances and the housing element update that have been going on and these other actions. So there's, there's the, the transit study that's looking at transportation improvements from Fairfax to the San Rafael hub. I'm actually on another technical advisory committee that's with the transit agency looking at bringing yellow buses back to schools countywide. And I also am on a third TAC, and that reminds me of what else I should share with you tonight. I'm on a third TAC, the Transportation Authority of Marin, which we abbreviate TAM. Under their nickel and their management are in the second round of updating different municipal pedestrian and bicycle master plans. So we're now in this second batch along with Tiburon and the county. And that is commencing and it'll be announced on May 6th that this effort is now picking up steam and that we have to convene another bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee of the town. And we're hoping that at least, well, two, that two council people will be on that committee. And it'll be advertised on the website and also mentioned sort of in a rollout announcement on May 6th. So those are the three technical advisory committees and sort of more global actions that are going on.
Is there some goal of the bicycle pedestrian committee?
These need to be updated periodically. And part of, once we convene the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee of the town, what we abbreviate and call the BPAC, then one of the first orders of business of that committee will be to sort of look at the existing document and revisit any issues that have come up since the adoption of that document, which is also part of the general plan's circulation elements. It's in the appendix. And so it's a thoroughly public participatory process that's just getting going here. But it's very important. And I might add that the first public scoping session on this whole effort will be held at Drake High School on June 6th, Saturday, June 6th in the morning. And it's going to be a presentation by the consultants for TAM, Alta. And it'll be a scoping session on existing conditions and the existing pedestrian bicycle master plans. And we'll actually be coupled on this kickoff, existing conditions presentation will be coupled with San Anselmo. That's why it's going to be held at the Drake High School. But that'll be noticed. I'll be mentioning it again on May 6th. I'll mention it again for you folks on May 21st at our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. And again, that'll be just a kickoff, public meeting to look at the existing conditions and the existing pedestrian and bicycle master plan and get feedback from the, the members of the public on what their concerns and, and red flag issues are.
Is there, is there a reason why bike and pedestrian, existing conditions and studies and considerations are not, why we don't kind of have a comprehensive transportation and circulation perspective on this? Because it seems to me that there's a whole lot of kind of interactive conditions and decision-making around, well, how much traffic do you have impacts whether or not bikes go here or there? And if you don't have existing conditions of lighting, you know, the, the two other things that you talked about, which were the, the corridor study and the traffic forum of understanding traffic flows to understand bike and pedestrian, it just seemed, it's confusing to me that we have, I just listed one, two, three, four different transportation, circulation-related committees and meetings and things that you're going to. And I'm kind of scratching my head why they're not all being looked at into, in integrative perspective. Because certainly a decision about buses might reduce traffic, which would impact pedestrian routes. And do you have any comments on that being so involved?
I, I can totally understand where you're coming from. In a perfect world, that was, be how it happens. But these are different, there's different timings involved, different funding sources. It, it just doesn't play out that way in the real world. So I think it's up to all of us, both the volunteers that step up to be on the BPAC, as well as staff like myself that's involved with these different things, to try to bring in the other elements. It's, it's, there's, all of these things are always moving targets. There's, you know, part of the reason for moving forward on the transit, sorry, the traffic forum when we can is to sort of get a better handle on where the background traffic's coming from that's growing even without physical growth in our town. So all these things feed in to, you know, comprehensive planning, but there's different pieces in motion. There's different funding sources. There's different agencies that are leading. The transit agency is not the same as the Transportation Authority of Marin. And then we're also blessed that TAM has the money to help spearhead the pedestrian and bicycle master plan update. I'd say the one comprehensive document that does weave all these pieces together, and that's the general plan. And in that sense, the general plan advisory committee is probably a logical place to try to be air traffic control on this stuff. And as you recall, may recall that, you know, the composition of the general plan implementation committee, which we abbreviate GPIC, is each of the sort of significant, well, each of the primary advisory bodies of town are represented, including the town councils, represented on the GPIC, as well as two members of the public at large make up the seven members. So GPIC is a, I think, the normal, the logical place to sort of ride shotgun on all the different pieces going on, as well as council and council giving direction to staff on what to spend their time monitoring.
Right. And GPIC invites members of the public to, so you can always show up and have something to say about consolidating of ideas.
One other, can I just mention one other thing? In all of these studies, there's a, there's a first step which is, is, which is existing conditions. And each of these studies looks at all adopted documents as background. So it's one thing to have all these things in the air and then having them not discuss things. But as each one goes up in the air, they're looking at what is adopted policy. So it's, that's really where, where it's already been codified or adopted as policy, that's what you have to take into consideration. And again, all of these things tend to be ongoing as, as are general plans.
Yeah, I would just, I, I totally understand. And I'm, I'm thinking also too, in terms of civic engagement process, some way of mapping them all together or a repository of information or hyperlinking or something. So a citizen who wants to be involved and make a comment can do so with an informed base upon which to do it and not have to be super in the know about all the little pieces. So perhaps on the announcement on, when you, when we write it up on the website of any one particular thing, to put pointers to the other ones. Not, you don't have to address it in great detail, but for more information about this, go look at that webpage. And for more information about that, go look over there. Might be helpful for people to be informed.
I will pass your comment on to those that run the website.
I kind of second that comment. I mean, because it would be really handy to be able to go to a bicycle and transportation section of the website. And then there's this list of organizations and people could kind of go down the, the list.
And, and the website really does sort of, has evolved over time in serving this, this purpose. And it's, that's a, a, a project in motion also. It's constantly revisiting the website, trying to make it more user-friendly, more informative. But there's a lot of information out there. You can actually turn people off if you try to inundate too much on these things too.
That's true. It's always a fine line. I, our town website though, I mean, compliments to who, who has control of it, is pretty good.
But and, and the town manager and the town clerk and our consultant, you know, are really spending as much time as possible to make it user-friendly and up to date.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the planning director's report? Hearing none. Then we will move on to commissioners' comments and requests. And I'd like to make a comment as, as a GPIC liaison member, that the, the list of our ordinance priorities has gone to GPIC. It's been looked at somewhat. And it, the conclusion, I believe, is sort of the consensus is that it would be good if we can prioritize some of those things. That's why my earlier comment about if, if each of us could, I think if we get seven or, seven ordinances to discuss, that's, that's going to be quite a bit right there. And we can prioritize those. that's going to be quite a bit right there, and we can prioritize those. So each of us... I would encourage at least us four to pick an ordinance that they, you know, they're a particular concern, and then hone in on that, and let's move those up to the top of the list.
So that makes me remember something else I should mention to you, which is in May, the final adoption of the general plan hopefully will occur on May 27th. And the very next day in this room is a budget workshop with the Town Council. And the Town Council will be hearing from the town manager and the department heads on their budgets and will be solidifying goals for next year. So just a reminder, we are a very understaffed town. We have limited capabilities. There's always a lot of things going on and unexpected things that take us off of our main path often. So that's important to show up if you have a real desire to see certain things as a priority of staff time.
Are there any other Commissioner comments or requests?
Did you say May 27th was the final approval of the housing? What was it?
The housing element.
The housing element, okay.
And the next day is the budget workshop during the day, but open to the public.
Any further Commissioner comments or requests?
I just wanted to know if maybe you're not... Do you know about the pedestrian lights at Good Earth? The ones that cross?
Ah...
Maybe an update?
They were upgraded, yeah, and they're the newest, brightest ones. That's all I know.
And that's on COVID?
Yes, yes. And they were... The original ones had the lights in the ground, which are really problematic. Apparently, they go out a lot. They burn out, and they're very costly. So they've gone to that newer... It's newer and the best one on the market, apparently.
Who's sponsoring or funding the corridor study? Who is that through, again?
TAM.
And the yellow buses was through...
The Transit Agency.
Marin Transit? Okay.
And originally, the corridor study was called the Trolley Study, and it morphed into the Transit Study. I'm sorry?
It's looking at traffic flows and traffic conditions and lighting and that... All of that kind of stuff, or even more?
No, it's looking at in... This will be part of the presentation on May 6th. It's looking at ways to increase transit service in the corridor.
Any other comments or requests before we potentially adjourn? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. The Planning Commission meeting of April 23rd.
I second the motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And Esther?